Call the County Board Tuesday, March 24th, 2015. Or, uh, rise and pledge your...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, roll call. Go to your voter board. You're ready now.
Yes, yes, yes.
Nineteen present, uh, two absent. Motion to agenda, presented agenda.
So, move.
Second. Second by Chuck Brand. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're gonna move some things around on the agenda. We're gonna bring the poet laureate up, uh, up on top and also ginger thing report. So, just so you're aware of that. In their packet is, uh, correspondence, is the unassigned fund balance, a letter from the Buck Fire Department supporting the location in Brussels for the new ambulance, and a fundraising letter from, um, the Kiwanee Legislative, Door County Kiwanee Legislative days. And, um, we're gonna skip right down after I get through if there's any public comment. Does anybody have a comment? Or, tell them who you are.
Okay. Will do. I'm Barb Grau. I live at 844 South 15th Avenue. Today, I bring you an invitation from the League of Women Voters, Door County. While the League may be most recognized for its voter service activities and candidate forum, the League also has a long history of providing educational forums. One of these sessions every couple of years is related to open meeting laws. We have two of these programs scheduled for late March. Let me be clear, this has not been scheduled because of any recent buzz about open meeting laws. The League has been planning to conduct that session this spring related to local government since our planning session last June. We are personally inviting the County Board, committee and commission members, and administrative staff, along with the public, to this informational meeting. A written invitation will be sent this week to the leadership of all towns, villages, the county, and school district groups. We hope the invitation will be forwarded to others involved with these governmental groups. The program is free and is being conducted locally. It is a great opportunity for those who are not able to attend statewide municipal government training opportunities. We invite you to attend either one of these sessions or both of them. It'll be next Monday, March 30th, 2:00 PM at the Nassauapi Town Hall. For those who don't know where it is, it's across from the airport. And the other is at the 6:30 at the Sebasville Town Hall, and that's on the highway next to the Sebasville School. We hope to see a lot of you there. Please spread the word. Um, there's a lot of misunderstanding about open meeting laws, and we hope that as it happened what we had scheduled, we'll clarify some of the issues. And, yes, your videographer there, videotaper there, will be taping the 6:30 meeting at the Sebasville Town Hall, and so it will be on the Internet and it will be on public access channels. Thank you.
Barbara, we have already sent out the letter to all the County Board members that it will be considered a regular committee meeting. Uh, and the speaker is Andy Phillips from the Wisconsin's County Association.
Uh, he's actually a lawyer in private practice right now, but he has been somebody who's worked with the Wisconsin County Association. The format is, there are ten snippets that are acted out situations that come up and what, how it pertains to the law. And then there'll be a break, and Andy will talk about this. There'll be plenty of time for questions. We think it'll be maybe an hour and a half, two hours. I suppose it depends the questions from the floor. But we, it's hard for people to get to Madison or other place for a training session, so we thought this opportunity, opening it up, would be a good one.
We're all familiar with Andy because he's at our convention all the time.
Okay, good. And we think that this will be a good program. Thank you for letting me speak.
Is there any other, uh, public comment? Estelle, what I'm gonna do is have Barbara, I'm gonna have Susan read the proclamation, resolution, and then we'll make a motion, and you can come forward and speak and whatever you've got to say. So, uh, for resolution number, uh, 2015 dash 21, a motion to put it on the floor. Motion by Susan, seconded by Kathy. Susan, you wanna read the, uh, resolution?
I hope I'm pronouncing the gentleman's name right. Ralph Murray? Is that correct?
Yeah, correct, Ralph.
Murray. Appointment of Ralph Murray as Door County's poet laureate to the Door County Board of Supervisors. Whereas Resolution 2010 dash 87 established the ceremonial and uncompensated position of poet laureate for Door County, Wisconsin. And whereas the primary mission of the poet laureate is to raise the county consciousness to a greater appreciation of the reading and writing of poetry, in furtherance of this mission, the poet laureate may be asked to plan, attend, and/or participate in countywide or statewide literary events. And whereas Resolution 2010 dash 87 approved the posthumous appointment of Francis May as Door County's inaugural poet laureate through March 31st, 2011. And whereas, beginning in 2011, the poet laureate will be appointed for a two-year term commencing April 1st and ending March 31st. The appointment shall be made by the County Board Chairperson after consultation with two local members of the Wisconsin Fellowship of Poets and/or Regional Writers Association and the outgoing poet laureate, and is subject to confirmation by the County Board. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Door County Board of Supervisors does hereby appoint Ralph Murray as poet laureate for Door County, Wisconsin, for the two-year term commencing April 1st, 2015, and ending March 31st, 2017.
Okay. All those in favor of that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed. Estelle, you wanna come, come up with the podium right over here? Ralph is sick, I understand.
Well, you know, when you get done talking, uh, this is gonna be the proclamation.
Okay. Fine. Thank you. Um, I want to begin by thanking the Board for creating this position of poet laureate of Door County, and by remembering that the request for the position was initiated by Jude Generow, Norbert Bly, and Nancy Raffel in 2010. While Jude has since moved to the northwest corner of Wisconsin, and Norb has gone on to the next world, Nancy has continued to oversee the process of selection, and I ask you to give her a round of applause for her dedication to poetry and her considerable executive ability. I have submitted a written outline of what I did as poet laureate in the last two years, so I will not take time to do more than just simply draw your attention to a project undertaken by the dozen poets who have been working with me since last summer to publish an anthology of poems titled "Soundings: Door County in Poetry." The manuscript is finished, apart from a few corrections. It is about 120 pages long, and it includes 57 poets. It will go on sale at the end of May, and we will begin presenting it this summer in various venues in Door County and around the state. I sincerely thank you for the opportunity for creating, um, this position so that the Door County Poets Collective could undertake a project of this scope and size. On behalf of the seven-person committee to select the poet laureate of Door County, I am very pleased to present Ralph Murray for your appointment to the position, um, in 2015 and 2017. He suddenly came down with the flu yesterday, so he is not able to be here today. But I'm honored to say a few words about his qualifications for the position and to read a poem that he has written especially for this occasion. Ralph is well-qualified to hold the position of, oh, of, sorry, poet laureate of Door County. He has published four books of his own work, Crude Red Boat, Psalms, The Price of Gravity, and with Sharon Aubrey, Wind Where Music Was. As the editor of Little Eagle Press, he's published poetry by several other fine Wisconsin poets. He's organized poetry readings at the Door County Auditorium and the Peninsula Art School, and has participated in Right on Door County's programs in the schools. He's read his work in many venues here and around the state and in the Midwest. He's an active member of the Wisconsin Fellowship of Poets, where he's known not only for his poems, but also for his role in publishing other poets, and for his illustrations, um, in the 2015 WFOP Poets Calendar. He has earned the respect and admiration of his peers, and we are pleased that he has accepted our call to serve as the next poet laureate of Door County. The poem that he has written for you. "To the duly elected, the newly elected, and those selected to serve many times before, I ask you to speak for the farmer as he tills, for the builder as he builds. Speak for the bagger of groceries, and speak, please, for the trees. Speak loudly to save quiet places. Speak too for the ferryman, the fisherman, the schools of fishes. Remember the one who taught you to read. Remember the ones who wash dishes. Be strong for the weak, the unhealthy. Speak up for those in need. Speak up for the artist and the scene she paints. Speak, please, for the creek. Be wary of saints and the wealthy. Speak out against greed. Speak for the nurses and nurserymen. Represent those who scrub floors. Represent those who pull weeds. Speak for the firefighter, the all-nighter cop. Speak for the crop in the field. Listen to the one who voted against you. Listen to the wind in the night. Listen to your heart when it says to stand fast. Listen close when it tells you to yield." Thank you.
Estelle, thank you for the books, and then there's a, I don't think they saw this. This is for Ralph Murray?
Murray.
Murray. Okay, this is what was given to me. Okay, thank you very much. Got the copy? Bill Schuster, are you got it, or shoot, you got it? Are you here?
I'm sure he's here.
We're gonna have a report on Jinjing.
Thank you, Dan. Welcome. Good morning, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here to talk to you about what's, uh, give you an update on what's going on with our sister-city relationship with Jinjing, China. Just to give you a little, a real brief history, um, uh, this relationship has been going on. Some of you probably were there at the beginning, over 10 years ago, when the County Board approved this sister-city relationship. You committed to a 10-year relationship, and at which time then we evaluate where we go with this in the future. The 10 years is gonna be up this summer. So, we'll be back to you in a month or two to talk about the future of the program and where we would recommend it go. Dan Oster charged Bill Schuster and I a year or two ago with the responsibility, like we had nothing else to do. He asked us to investigate this sister-city relationship and see if there is, if it was, if we were getting some benefit out of it, and if it was worthwhile continuing to the future. So, we, as you probably know, we reported to you, uh, last summer about the trip that Bill and I and eight other people took to our sister-city in October of 2013. And we were invited, as we are every year, as a sister-city, to their International Ceramic Fair, which is a huge, uh, global affair with, uh, probably tens of thousands of people that go to this community, to our sister-city, to see ceramic exhibits from businesses all over the world. Uh, and it's the best ceramics that you'll see anywhere in the world. So, it's the, it's the, it's the ceramic show of the, of the globe. So, again, it's a real honor to be able to see that and to see the other, uh, things going on in our sister-city. Obviously, that was a great experience. I think all of us that participated in 2013 really enjoyed the experience. We were treated royally by our sister-city, um, and they're a great host, and they, they really wanna see this relationship blossom and flower into even more in the future. They have put a lot of initiatives in front of us, more than Bill and I have time to handle. Uh, Bill and I have proactively tried to recruit other people in the community to step up that have an interest in this, to take over some of these projects that are made available to us, because we just don't have the time to do that, do all that they would like to do with us. But, a couple of things you're gonna hear more about, I'm gonna introduce you in a minute to the three members of the delegation that represented Door County last October at this year's, uh, last year's, uh, annual ceramic fair in Jinjing. But there, you're gonna hear things about, um, the, a scholarship program that they're offering to any Door County resident, young or old, that would like to go to their international, International Ceramic Institute, which is a training school for ceramics. Fortunately, our delegation leader this year, Helen Bacon, actually stayed after the fair experience. She stayed for an extra three weeks to take advantage of that scholarship. So, you're gonna hear firsthand, uh, what happened there. And again, that's available to us now and into the future for any Door County resident that would like to, uh, to learn more about doing ceramics. And again, uh, they, from beginners to more, to the most professional, uh, students are welcome to participate. Uh, the other thing that's kind of exciting is they've invited us to, um, design a square, an outdoor plaza, in one of their redevelopment districts. Ceramics has been going on in Jinjing for thousands of years, and they have factories that date back many, many hundreds of years. So, uh, they're redeveloping, just like we redeveloped some of our old waterfront areas in Door County, they're redeveloping, um, there are some of their historic factory areas. So, um, they're putting new uses, just like we are, hotels, retails, restaurants, they're putting all that. China's become quite the capitalist, uh, economy, um, and, and there's a lot of vibrant economies going on there, a lot of business activity. So, they're redeveloping these historic resources into some new uses. And in one of the outdoor plazas in this area, they've invited all their sister-cities to design a square, the plaza, to represent their culture and their geography. So, we, uh, put, put the invite out, Bill and I did, to numerous groups, and we'd actually got a couple takers. Greg Meisner and Tricia Croyle, who you're gonna meet this morning, uh, took that task and ran with it. They have designed a square representing Door County, and I assume she's gonna show you what that square is designed to look like this morning. Uh, and as far as we know, it is under construction as we speak. We're hoping. And, uh, our, we actually have a delegation going this spring again to actually inspect that project and provide some support, continued support. You'll hear more about that later. Other projects besides the scholarship, the, um, the, um, square, uh, they've invited us to do a Door County retail outlet there, and they're lining up, uh, we think they're lining up some investors to help make that happen, and we're working with some Door County businesses to possibly, uh, be engaged in that process, selling products to them that they would sell there. So, that's really exciting. Now, we're talking about some real exchange happening. They're very interested in our medical care system and our hospital system, so, uh, part of the delegation going in the future will investigate that. One of our delegates, John Ribsky, uh, is on the board of the local Maritime Museum. He's very interested in maritime history. Uh, he, he engaged in some museum, uh, experiences there, and they would like to continue those kinds of relationships. We expect they will be asking us to host students in the future and future, uh, sister-city delegations. So, um, lots going on. Again, there's other initiatives that we haven't had the opportunity to really pursue because we just don't have the time. So, in a minute, I'm gonna introduce the delegates from last October, but, uh, we will wrap up then. Bill Schuster will come up and wrap up this, uh, presentation for you this morning and tell you about a couple of, uh, next steps that are, that are planned to take place that, uh, before we report back to you this summer as to the future of the program, we'd like to, to go through these couple of next steps. So, if Helen Bacon and Tricia Croyle and John Ribsky would come up, and they're gonna take it over from here, from me, they have a, a PowerPoint presentation they're gonna share with you about the trip that they took to our sister-city, Jinjing, in October of 2014. Helen was the leader of the program. Just to remind you, this is all at their own expense. The only, um, support they get is when we are in our sister-city. There, our host does cover our room and board when we're there, so they're, they're very gracious and do a wonderful job of taking care of those costs, as well as the travel costs in and around the city. But these folks have spent their own nickel to, to make the rest of that happen. So, thank these guys and appreciate them representing Door County so well this past year. Helen?
Okay. Can we, yeah, but can we, maybe kill them lights a little bit? I have mostly pictures because I thought, they gave me three minutes. I can show you more, and then I can talk, and if I start talking, it's dangerous. Um, all the large, blue and white that you see is actually painted porcelain. This is the ceramic sphere. Well, it doesn't have to be too slow. I, there's a lot of slides. So, I said they could be fast. Um, this is the ceramic fair. The, the first one was the opening banquet, or the cadre banquet, as my son likes to call it. Um, you fly into Shanghai, and then, um, it's one-hour flight from Shanghai, one hour, two hours from Beijing, kinda out in the countryside. This is our cadre banquet, the opening banquet, with lots of speeches. Lot of speeches, lot of gift-giving. This is one piece of fired ceramic painted unfired in the blue and white that Jinjing is famous for. This is the opening ceremony. You can go a little faster. Just some, some of the people that were there. There's quite a few people from all over the world that come. Um, I don't, I think they have four sister-cities, um, but we had, um, interactions with people from, this is, uh, fancy Italy, um, which is their, Italy's ceramic center, people from Sri Lanka. Um, there's a guy from Delft, Holland. One of the things I really enjoyed was the Folk Art Museum, which showed us how porcelain was made, you know, say a thousand years ago. Um, they have about a 2,000-year written history of porcelain. Um, and I really, really enjoyed that. This is a guy painting, painting a pot. These pots are not fired before they're painted, most of them. It's kind of a tricky business 'cause they break very easily. I learned, this is the hospital. Um, it's the people, uh, the People's First Hospital. There's three or four hospitals in, um, Jinjing, and this is the doctor, some of the nurses. Um, this is an ambulance driver getting his blood pressure taken for some reason. Some of the nurses, um, they were, I met with them five different times, doing a number of things. Got to know some of the, um, some of the people really quite well, met them more than once. And then, the, uh, they started an English class. On Friday afternoons, the hospital gave them the conference room from two to, two, two, two hours in the afternoon. Gift-giving is really a big thing, um, so when we go there, we bring them presents, they give us gifts back. There's kind of a formal exchange. Um, and I didn't bring any pictures of the art experience. I didn't, um, know if that was, you know, interesting to anyone, but if you know anyone that's interested in that, certainly can give me a, give me a call. And I have many pictures. If you wanna sit down and look at all of them, I'd be more than happy to share with you. But that's kind of a quick overview. Um, it consisted of a lot of visiting, um, going someplace in the morning, going someplace in the afternoon. Um, they took care of me for five days, and then I had a little more than three weeks studying art, um, in a different area, and, um, continued to have some, um, contact with the city government, and, um, did some English classes with people and stuff. So, it was really very, a very, very interesting experience, and, and I'm hoping that the hospital has three employees that, or two employees that they're gonna be sending, sending over. And, um, so we're gonna see how that exchange works. I'm kind of excited about that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
See, do we have another slideshow up there? Okay. Um, so this is the square project, and upper right is me meeting with our translator, and this was a huge painting that was at, um, one of the museum areas that shows where the square is located. And then we have a couple of architectural renderings. Um, the building in the middle, on the left, on the far right, is where, um, Door County would have its business located in that building, and where the people are walking around, that's basically our square area. And this is really a very prominent position coming into, um, this whole project. There's a major road that runs up to the right, and we are right off the major road. So, this is really quite prominent in what's going on. Um, these are some views that we took in October when we were there before the square was started. Um, the buildings are under construction. They are not completed. They expected to have them completed in April. And, um, the upper left is a long view of the square site, and then, um, a couple other views of the square site. When we went in October, we had just sort of half the area, and we presented them with an idea of what we wanted to do, and they were so enthralled with the idea that they said, "Oh, we'll double the square size, so why don't you go home and redraw it and add a few things and give us a little more content and come back to us?" And so, um, we did that. Um, this is more shots of the square under construction. And this was, um, one of the original, oh, sort of original presentation concepts that we had done. Upper left, you see a representation of the Canna Lighthouse, and then some seating, and then in the middle, you see a representation of the Great Lakes. And what we had thought at this time was to take the Great Lakes and to sink them in, or at least one of them, into, um, I'm gonna say, into the mall area, and it would be out of blue porcelain. That was our original idea. And then, on the lower right-hand side, we have an artist's concept of a boat, or of shipping. And then, the whole thing would be surrounded by some landscaping and a fence with a gate, and the gate is what you see on the upper right-hand corner, and I think I have some more of that. So, this is a representation of what the lakes would look like, and our lake would be sunken, and the rest of them would be flat. And then, this was a representation of what the fencing around it would look like. It would be a wrought iron fence. And in each of the sections of the fence was to be a medallion that would be made out of porcelain. And on the porcelain would be printed, you saw a larger piece of porcelain with a painting on it. These would be photographs that would be put on the porcelain and then suspended in the middle of the fence. And the photographs rep, represent both Door County, um, a large portion of it, in the very center, the whole centerpiece of that is Door County. Various scenes from Door County. Um, boats and fishes and cheese and cherries and trees, those kinds of things, and the lakes. Um, and then the very ends, it starts with a whole representation of America. It goes from the Golden Gate Bridge on the left to the Statue of Liberty on the right, and then flanked on both ends by mountains and a little bit of prairie, with the major portion of it representing Door County. The archway, the entrance going in, says sort of a welcome to, um, Door County's sister-city to Jinjing, China. And so, that was the idea we had there. And there's some representations of how the fence could be built and what it might look like. Um, some details on a, on a small replica, about 15-foot high, of the Canna Lighthouse. Some details on a small replica, about 15-foot high of the Cana Lighthouse. And then couple of ideas on what the boat might look like or the ship might look like. And then some representations of various paving kinds of patterns that might represent Door County and some local stone. Some signage that would explain Door County and where we are with some mapping and a little bit of history of us that would be written by us. And then they came back to us and they wanted a few changes. And so what they wanted was to relocate where the lighthouse was and move, sort of switch the boat and the lighthouse around. So the lighthouse is now lower right, the boat is up in the middle, more seating for the stores upper left. And then they've taken the Great Lakes and moved them out and made them quite small and actually moved them into the road in front of the door into the retail complex, which is not a bad thing. It's probably a pretty good idea. And instead of being porcelain, it would be stainless steel and you would actually walk on it. So coming into a front entry off the road as opposed to a side entry would be the Great Lakes and you would walk across the Great Lakes, which are made out of steel, into the Door County retail complex. So those are a few changes that they decided to make and we thought they were a pretty good idea. So that's kind of where we're at. Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Ripski and I went on this wonderful trip to Jinjiang as the spouse of the architect. But I also went with a great interest in what is going on in China. And the one impression that I got and I think anyone who goes there will get is this is not your father's China. This is not the China of the Cold War and black and white photos of Mao swimming in the river. It is a vibrant, fantastic, exuberant country. Jinjiang is what's known in China as a third-tier city and depending on who you ask with a population, a third-tier city with a population of between 1.4 and 2 million people, which makes Jinjiang the equivalent, I suppose, of maybe a Green Bay in the larger scheme of things. It is very large, very dense and has an incredible history of manufacturing porcelain that goes back thousands of years. What I'd like to talk to you briefly about is museums' relationships and what I see as the benefits of this relationship. I am, I got a promotion, by the way. I was promoted to being a member of the Board of the Door County Maritime Museum. I'm in fact a volunteer at the museum and also a volunteer in the wooden boat building program at the museum and have been for two years and have a great interest in what the museum is doing with respect to preserving the heritage of our area in boat building and the maritime industry. In the same way, Jinjiang has this great history of the production and export of porcelain worldwide. In fact, while we were there, they opened an exhibit that they called the Sea Silk Road. I think most of us have heard about the Silk Road, which extended from the city, the ancient capital of China, Xi'an, to all the way to Baghdad through Afghanistan. That was known as the Silk Road and it was a land transportation system, bringing goods both from China to the West and ultimately to Europe, as well as bringing products from the Middle East and Europe to China. There was a second way that things were transported across what is known as the Sea Silk Road. And if you can see the map at the right, you can see that there were shipping routes that were traveled by the Chinese all the way into the Red Sea, the Gulf of Hormuz and to Africa. And they have been exporting their porcelain to those locations for, in fact, thousands of years. They traveled by ship that we would call junks and they traveled in large convoys and they transported a great deal of porcelain to those countries. They also adopted some of the art of those countries and integrated it into their porcelain in order to increase the sale of their products. Porcelain is not only used to make plates and pictures, but also is used to make statues of historical figures. The Folk Art Museum was mentioned and in fact Jinjiang as a center of porcelain manufacture has a number of museums. The Folk Art Museum is a live demonstration, a very large park, and it demonstrates how porcelain was made hundreds and in fact thousands of years ago. As you can see in this, porcelain is used in many different ways. Broken porcelain was used to make this drainage that you see flowing behind the lady who's standing there. You can also notice the post in the back, which is porcelain. As you've seen from Bill's photographs in the past, the lamp posts in all of Jinjiang are made of porcelain. Don't run into them with your car. They don't stand up too well to that. This is another shot of the Folk Art Museum and you can see that porcelain was made into some extremely large pots, as well as small teacups and pots that we're familiar with. They do live demonstrations just as we do live demonstrations at the Door County Maritime Museum. On Fridays and Saturdays, you can come into the museum and see us working in the workshop, building a boat. We're building a stickleback dory this year, by the way. And everybody's welcome to come by, ask questions and see what we're doing. Well, in the same way in Jinjiang, they have artists who work in these workshops and demonstrate the art and skills that were necessary to make this pottery. Back in historical times, they didn't have natural gas to fire their kilns and kilns were wood-fired. This was a very large and rather modern kiln that had a chimney. The very earliest kilns were hill kilns where they actually built the kiln up the side of a hill because they didn't have the technology to build a flue that was vertical. Wells, of course, were necessary and this is a well structure that protected the well as well as a workshop building. All of these photos that you've seen are from the Folk Art Museum. And finally, a picture of what is the old build structure for the National Porcelain Museum. I met with Mr. Wang, who's standing to my right, and he is the chairman and director of the Door County National Porcelain Museum. He was very interested in what we do here and has expressed an interest in coming to visit us here. So you have many museums with static displays, demonstrations and of course, a major objective of museums in China as well as the museums here in the United States and the Door County Maritime Museum is education. I think that education is a major benefit to our community. China is a country and a culture based on relationships and one of the great things that happened for us, even in the short period of time we were there, was that we developed some relationships. I, for example, am on Skype two days a week now, teaching English to a gentleman who lives in Jinjiang and he's teaching me Mandarin as a way of maintaining our relationship. I'm doing that under the auspices of the Kowani Literacy Partnership with their guidance and materials. I hope that our visit will result in someone from the museums in Jinjiang coming and visiting us here and visiting the Door County Maritime Museum. The Door County Maritime Museum has indicated its interest and its willingness to host someone from Jinjiang. So thank you very much and thank you for the opportunity to go to China.
Just wrap a little number of things up, just so you know the connections. Helen didn't say, but Helen is retired nurse, so that's where she had the role, starting communications and relationships with the medical industry. Tricia is a retired architect instructor at the technical schools. So that was her connection is when Bill and I were reaching out for people to help us with designing the square because they made the offer and Bill and I can build things out of wood, but we're not very good at building squares. Also, since the last time we talked, we now have the Sister City Committee and four county board members are on that. That's part of that whole effort that Bill and I have to build a broad base of a community program. And we've met a couple of times and we'll be meeting again soon because we have a number of things on the docket. So what's going to happen next is they are in some stage of building the square honoring Door County and also working with some retail folks in Door County to see if we can get the Door County retail space going. To work on that, on the square particularly, they made a request that we would send at least one of the designers back to China to meet with them. Because Bill and I have been working on with Skype and others, talking to the representatives, trying to explain what exactly we mean by the square. So what we're going to be doing is April 27th to 30th, Susie Kohlt is going to be the leader of a delegation which is going to go back to China with the main focus of being the square. Greg Meisner and Susie's husband is also going, Bob. And Greg Meisner, who was the other half of the designing of the square, Greg brings the landscape part of it and Tricia brought the architectural part, the two skill sets. So Greg and Marcia, his wife, are going to also go and they're going to, hopefully the square will be in progress and try to answer some of the questions that it's really difficult. We've talked about the difficulties of language and culture. Not going into all the other names, we also will have two representatives from Door County Memorial Hospital. The Chinese are very interested in developing some sort of exchange program with the medical industry. We're also excited to have a reporter from The Advocate is going to go along. One of the items that Bill mentioned, time and commitment to make things happen, one of the items that we really lack is getting the whole community informed about the project. And by The Advocate being more involved, that's going to help. So I think you're going to see some travel log or sort of articles as this happens and reach out to the community. One other gentleman is going, he's from the UW-Madison system and he works with promotional items, websites, brochures, whatever, graphic arts. And we're hoping that may morph into some more volunteer time as we look towards the whole package of the sister city. So they're all sort of focused, they're all going to be traveling potentially at different times, but they'll be in, just saying from the 27th to the 30th of April. On the reverse of that, the Chinese tentative, we haven't confirmed all of this, are going to be arriving in Door County in June and will be flying into Chicago on June 16th. So they're going to be here in Door County on the 17th and the 18th and we're hoping to work with Dan to have some sort of interaction between the county board and that group. There's going to be six of them to show they're interested in the relationship with the hospital. Four of them are going to be in the medical industry and then two of them are going to be representatives of their government and the Office of Foreign Affairs. So we're hoping that we can make something happen where the county board can particularly meet with their representatives from their governmental unit. So as always, we've taken more time than we said we were going to, but if there's any questions, we can answer them. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Thank you, Bill, Bill. Get back to the agenda now in its order. Administrator's monthly report.
There will be none.
Okay. Then we'll have a motion to accept the minutes of February 24th. So moved by John, seconded by Dick James. I got the second ready. Is there any corrections or additions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. We're going to go to pending business now, the Human Services Resource Center. Joe's going to come and tell us basically where it's at. There's a printout at your desk that we'll talk about later. Joe's got the flu, correct? You've got the flu?
Yeah. Morning, everybody.
Morning.
We, as most of you I think know, we completed a contract with Venture Architecture last week actually and had our first conference call with them this morning, or yesterday morning. We are looking at putting together the proposal for the senior center. So at this point where things stand, we are going to have a community forum on April 14th. That community forum will include two different sessions, one in the afternoon from 1:30 to 3:30 and one from 5 to 7, for people to come and give input and thoughts about what we ought to be providing at the center, what kind of things are wanted. I am hopeful that many of you would be willing or able to attend. We've got a couple of board members who have offered to be part of a committee, but we're also looking for another, at least probably two more. So far Randy and Ben have agreed to be part of that. But we're hopeful in order, to try and get some other folks involved in that process. We'll put together a core team of folks that'll deal with the architectural firm as we go through this process. It's on a fairly quick track then at this point. We'll do the meeting in April. We have another meeting scheduled for the same day with just staff to talk about program needs. Then we have two other tentative scheduled appointments or meetings in May. And at that point, we're hoping to be able to bring a final report back to the board from Venture to you with proposals on the building and cost estimates. And we're hoping to do that, our tentative schedule is to try and do that by the June county board meeting. I think that's the 23rd. If we don't make it by June, we'll definitely be here by July. But our goal is to try and present you with the material that we need. So again, there are a couple of board members who are interested in being part of this process, please shoot me an email, let me know so that I can get you involved in that and let you know when those other dates are. That's about it.
The reason that he's here is that Grant and I were talking the other day and I thought that it's time for the county board to step forward. We've been talking about this for six years, I think, at least.
Long time.
Long time and it's, so I talked to Grant and I said to him, why can't we get a shovel in the ground by November? Well, he said that wasn't possible.
The architects laughed at that too. They thought maybe next spring might be possible.
Next spring. So Grant put together a tentative schedule that's on your desk and the ones that are highlighted in yellow, September 2015 and then March 2016 are votes by the county board. Kenny, where is he? Those are definite votes that have to be taken to proceed forward, but, and I also said that we should, if we're going to do it, and I use the term, time for us to phone or get out of the booth, that we take the votes before the next county board comes in session because of, otherwise you've got to go through the whole process again. And I talked to David Leino on Finance Committee to start looking into the situations on how to borrow the money because this is definitely going to be a borrowed money situation. I don't think there's any way we can get it out of the tax levy, right Dave?
Don't know yet.
And that's what they're going to look into. And supposedly out there, there are some pretty big people that want to donate some money. And Roy has been involved with 501(c)(3). I don't know if you can say anything about how close we are to getting that, so.
Yes.
There's a Friends Group.
Right. We call, the 501(c)(3) is Friends of the Senior Center and the main mission is to assist and provide more information and facilities for the senior center. And our main mission right now is to solicit funds to build the senior center. That's the main mission. This 501(c)(3) corporation funds were obtained to get the permit through our supervisor. This 501(c)(3) corporation, funds were obtained to get the permit through our supervisor number 18, District 18, we got a generous donation from individuals to provide the money to make an application for the senior center, 501(c)(3) Friends Group. And now any money is given to that, to us now, would be deductible as of January 1st of 2015. We don't have our charter yet, but it's in the process of being sent to the state.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions so far? The idea is to get this moving along and get two or three committees working together simultaneously, that we don't have to work, and we're going to have a estimated cost by June or July, right?
By June, hopefully, yeah.
And you want to be, from my past experience, before you go off for final building plans, which will cost $70,000 or $80,000, I'm guessing, you want to make sure that you're going to do the project by then, before we go out and get final building plans. So the donation people, and of course, the bigger donations we get, the better building we'll have, I think, and I hope there's some, that's what David's going to figure out, like a challenge, the county puts up so much and the donations put up so much.
And I do have some scheduled time with some of the Friends of the Senior Center to talk about something.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions? Grant, you got anything to add?
No, just briefly, the tentative timeline I put together is really a best case scenario. Also, what was passed out to you is a copy of the resolution, and just to make sure everybody's clear, where we are at is in the midst of Phase 2. Joe indicated that he anticipates a preliminary design, preliminary cost estimate, coming back to the county board at the end of June, and I have tagged September 2015 as the date the county board would review and decide, not only design, but funding and authorization to proceed with Phase 3, which is the final design documents, competitive bidding, excuse me, and award of the contract to the general contractor, which would be the next time it would come back to the county board, which would be the end of March 2016. If the county board approves that, then we'd be off and running with the construction project, with my hope that we would be done by April of 2017. The architects might be laughing at that, but the reason for that is the building we are going to lease to house some of Joe's employees in the interim, has a two-year lease, and if we can escape having to pay a third year, that will benefit the county. But really, September 2015 is an important date, because not only will the preliminary design and cost estimates, you are going to make a decision on how this is funded, and any private donations that might be out there and waiting, really probably need to be, if not in hand, committed by that date, so that the county board can make a decision as to whether or not it's going to do a debt issuance or something else in terms of funding the difference between the money we have on hand, the money we may get from private donations, and whatever that balance is to complete the project.
Has anybody got any questions? Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. First resolution is the National Government Month, Counties Moving America Forward. I'll just read that now there be resolved that the Door County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim April 2015 as national county government, counties moving America forward. The keys are transportation, infrastructure, and it further be resolved that the Door County Board of Supervisors encourages all Door County officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities. Is there a motion to approve that? Moved by Chuck, seconded by Joel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed. Now we'll go to the.
Dan?
Yes.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
Just for the information of the other supervisors, those of us who went to Legislative Exchange this year were given something, and I know this is not national counties, this is Wisconsin counties, but they have made available on their website a brochure about what are counties, a video that you can get off the website, or I'm sure they would give you, as they did to us, and a PowerPoint. So if you ever are speaking to a group or you want to give information more about what does county government do, that's available, and they're really, really quite well done, so, just so that you all know.
Okay, is there any questions? If not, we'll go to the non-commercial hanger site lease agreement. Richard Burley isn't here now. Where's Chuck? Can you want to lead us forward on that, because you've done it before.
Sure, I guess.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to, I have to find the page here first, page 17.
Page 17, please.
I make a motion to support Resolution Number 2015-22, the non-commercial hanger site lease. It's for Michael Merrell, building number 57, and for Dave Burke, building number 70. These are just a continuation of leases that have already been in the works out there with everybody else that has hangers, and I'd ask for your support to have it.
Is there a second to it? Seconded by Don City. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed unanimously. Next item, we're going to use the voter board. Next item is the transfer of non-budgeted funds, acquisition of pin number 0200234282533 down in Nassau Wapi. Everybody know where that is? John Neistat, you want to make a motion to approve?
Yes, I move to approve this resolution.
I'll second.
Okay. John, you want to, even though it's coming from the Finance Committee, John, you want to explain it?
I have Mr. Kalogia here, and he'll give us all the bolts and nuts that's connected with this.
Good morning. The resolution before you is authorization to purchase a 40-acre parcel of land from Mr. Ken Ward, actually, in the town of Nassau Wapi. Now, this property is an ongoing active mine that we have been operating under a lease agreement with the property owner for a little over 20 years. The property owner indicated to us, it was actually late in 2014, indicated an interest to sell this property, and we negotiated the price after receiving an appraisal, discussing it over with the Highway Committee, and working out a purchase price with the property owner. That's why it was not included in your budget, because we really didn't know at the time of your budget preparations that the property owner had an interest in selling it. We've had a long-term lease agreement in which we pay royalties to the property owner for the extraction of the mine. We have exclusivity of that mining operation, and have been working there, like I said, for over 20 years. This is a product that we used primarily for road construction, but it also is the hardest stone that we have available for material that we use at our hot mix operation. So this is a very critical part of our operations, and therefore, the recommendation to purchase this land comes before you. The Highway Committee fully endorses and unanimously approved the acquisition, and it was followed up by a recommendation from the Finance Committee unanimously to make the purchase as well. If there are any specific questions about the details of it, I'm more than willing to answer any of those questions.
John, what's the shelf life on that?
The shelf life?
Life of the mine.
Oh, okay. We anticipate in excess of 24 years that we will have at that site with, now that's based upon our current extraction, which is about 21,000 yards of material that we use from that site on an annual, average annual basis over the last 11 years.
Are there any other questions? Did you mention that, first it's going to take two-thirds vote, correct? And where the money is coming from? Maybe Kenny can explain.
Yeah, the other thing I wanted to mention was that, and I apologize for that, because John had preempted me to make sure I mentioned this, but the funding is coming from the DK fund. There's currently a balance of $527,000 that is available there. Now, of course, just to refresh your memories, that is funds that we received from the state to take over County Highway DK, or the old State Highway 57. This is, we have completed all of the projects that were earmarked in that jurisdictional transfer. This is funds that are available for Highway Department purposes or highway uses, is what the county, the historical site has been for the usage of these funds.
Are there any questions? Should have Kenny explain that.
I was going to say, are Dan and Ken going to?
You want me to say it, don't you, so I will. Since it's coming out of the Dan and Ken Fund, will it be renamed the Dan and Ken Quarry? Whatever you want.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll go to the voter board and vote yes. Dick, you have a question?
I was just going to ask when the lease is up. We have it leased now?
Correct. We have, the lease expires in 2021, and in that lease agreement, we continue to pay royalties, as well as we have a right of first refusal in that lease agreement.
So it would make more sense to buy it than to continue the lease until it's?
Well, from what I understand, the person wants to sell it, period.
The person is interested in selling it, and he really does want to sell it to Door County, which is why he made the offer to us. But yes, the answer to your question, in the long term, it is significantly cost-effective for us to purchase this than to continue to pay royalties to the property owner.
You said he does.
Looking at the total amount of material that we can extract from there over the 25 years.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? If not, we'll go to the voter board and vote yes or no. That has passed and a vote of 19 yes with two absent. Next item is the revolving loan fund. Richard Haynes, you want to make a motion, and we'll get a second, and then you explain it?
I really wasn't in attendance at that meeting, so maybe Bill should.
Well, Bill's still there? Okay. Make a motion, Dick. Make a motion.
I will make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Trump.
Seconded by Ken Fisher. Go ahead, Bill.
Just again, a very small loan, $50,000 from the county loan fund to the proposed new owner for the, what was the hitching post? This is a very successful restaurant business owner from Green Bay that is acquiring this business, this property. Bank of Luxembourg is backing the majority of the financing for this project. We're doing $50,000 worth of new equipment for the, to get the business back into operation. So again, we're well collateralized with first lien on the equipment and some second and third leads on real estate, both in Door County and in Green Bay. So it looks like a very good loan to get a good business back in, open. And again, based on her record in Green Bay, we're very excited this would be a very successful restaurant.
Okay, are there any questions? Go ahead, Ken.
Bill, have all the past issues been handled with this property? I don't ask details, I just want to know if this is a clean slate, all new owners and everything.
Grant, can you help with that question?
What?
I'm asking Grant if he knows the answer to Ken's question.
Whether it's new ownership, I have absolutely no idea. My assumption was, because unfortunately I had a prior commitment, is that the current ownership group is a new ownership group, and it's different from the past, and that the past ownership is out of the picture, but I don't have documentation of that.
What about past issues? Have they been addressed and taken care of?
Leo may know the answer, being in your town.
I don't have an answer.
Okay.
Any pending claims or lawsuits have been resolved in the county's favor that concern that property. Sorry, I wasn't intuiting your question correctly. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions? Go to the voter board and vote yes or no. That has passed and a vote of 19 yes with two absent. Next, we'll go to the ordinances, shoreline zoning provisions, the report. Mr. Ken, you want to make a motion and?
Well, these are all basically text amendments. You want to handle it all at one and let Mariah come up there and explain it to us? Or do you want to go one at a time?
Go one at a, one at a time, because you've got to take a vote on each one.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the shoreline zoning provisions report.
Okay, is there a second by Don City? Go ahead, Mariah.
Unless anybody has any questions, I'm not going to go over this in detail. Basically, the state shoreline zoning regulations are what we're required to comply with and have in place in our zoning ordinance. The state has been working to change those shoreline zoning regulations, and we don't have to come fully into compliance until 2016 with what's on the books now for shoreline zoning, but last year, there was legislation passed that made us put certain pieces of the shoreline zoning regulations at the state level into our ordinance, which you may remember that we did that last summer, but then when the Department of Natural Resources wrote the new administrative rules to go along with that 2013 law, there were things in the rules that we didn't have in our regulations. So this is to clean up what the state is saying that we have to have in our zoning ordinance at this time.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? John?
Grant, does this have anything, does this, anything that's in progress now, any action? Is this going to affect any property owners that are currently in discussions on this shoreline zoning?
No. Once the changes are in place and this ordinance is in effect upon passage, will be in effect today, anybody that is, I guess, in the pipeline, might be, as correct a term as I can use, would be covered by the rules that were in effect up till today, but anybody that comes into the pipeline from this point forward will be covered by the amended Door County zoning ordinance in this resolution, so, if that answers your question.
Any other questions? Joel?
I was going to ask, Mariah, this is, was it coming down from the state, so we're kind of replicating what they pushed out?
Yeah, we basically have to, and kind of to follow up on John's question, this actually is going to increase the options for people that live along the shore, so we actually have people that are waiting for us to pass this.
Well, can I just ask one question then?
Sure.
Like all of Door County, reading through this and trying to grasp it myself, I think this is a huge benefit and a bonus, and it's long overdue in my opinion. Did the state ever have talk about consideration, you know, we're talking about the high-watermark distance setbacks, was there ever talk at any time of elevation pertaining to that setback? You know, if you're on a 200-foot cliff, you still got to be 75 feet away, or can you be 40 feet or something? Because the fear is ultimately a flood, right, from a setback?
Well, but also erosion and things like that, so, no, is the short answer. It's, they've never talked about changing that 75-foot setback on the original high-watermark.
I was just curious.
Are there any other questions? We're going to take a voice vote on the report, and then we'll take a voter board vote on ordinance itself. So all in favor of the report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Now a motion to accept the ordinance?
And Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the mandatory zoning ordinance 2015-1.
Okay. Made by Fisher, seconded by Don City. Are there any questions at all? We'll go to the voter board. Go ahead, Dick.
Mariah, you said there was people kind of waiting for this to happen? For what reasons would that be?
Well, this, the changes that we're being required to make allow some expansions to structures that exist that don't meet the required water setback, that weren't previously allowed before. So, I mean, there've been people that have, I mean, people come and talk to us all the time about projects that they want to do, and so for months, we've known that this has been coming, and so we've told people, well, you know what, you can't do it now, but you're going to be able to do it in, whatever, six months, when we have the ordinance rewritten. It allows some expansion of structures that don't meet the water setback.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, go to your voter board and vote yes or no on that. Don City.
Got a vote.
There you go. Got the right button, finally. Got the right button finally. That has passed on a vote of 19 yes and two absent. Next item is a report on the ordinance text amendment cleanup. Ken?
Just make a motion to accept the report, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Okay. Seconded by David. Go ahead on that one, Mariah.
As it says in the title, these are cleanup. Several of these things are changes that need to be made in order to comply with state statutes, so they're things that we may have missed previously when we were trying to previously amend the ordinance to comply with state statutes. And then just, or the other changes are to clarify what we're doing, like, for example, the appeals section, the way that that's written there, that's how we've been doing appeals for 15 years, but it hasn't been clearly reflected in our ordinance, and that's caused some confusion. So I can answer questions if anybody has a question about one of the specific amendments, but it's really just to make sure that we're complying with state statutes and to make sure that our ordinance says what we're doing.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed unanimously. Want to make a motion for the ordinance?
I'll make a motion to adopt the mandatory zoning ordinance 2015-02, Mr. Chairman.
Second? Seconded by David Lino. Are there any questions on it? Ready? Okay. Go to your voter board and vote yes or no. That has passed on a vote of 19 yes, two absent. Next item is a report on the land ordinance amendment petition. Somebody want to make a motion?
Again, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the report on the land division ordinance amendment.
Okay. Seconded by Susan. Go ahead.
Once again, these are amendments that are required due to changes in the state law, and we've got two small, very small cleanup amendments that were things that we found as we were going through the ordinance, but pretty much this, most of this has to do with laws that were passed last year regarding land divisions and surveying.
Okay. Is there any questions? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed unanimously. Now a motion to implement the ordinance. Motion by...
Motion to adopt the ordinance number 2015-03.
Seconded by Chuck Brand. Go to your voter... Any questions? If not, we'll wait here a second. Go to your voter board and vote yes or no. That has passed on a vote of 19 yes and two absent. Is there any new business? Any oral committee reports? Susan?
I would just like to let, remind the supervisors of two legislative committee meetings that are coming next week. The first one is on Tuesday, that's the 31st. It's at 2:00 in the afternoon in this room, and it's with Kyle Christiansen of Wisconsin Counties. The main reason he's coming is a question and a concern that John Neinis had, but others have also had with regard to room tax and how that might affect us. But he may have other issues that he would be available to talk about, and he will also talk with us about the budget, the proposed budget in Madison. So you're welcome. The second one is a rescheduling of a meeting that we had with Representative Joel Kitchens, which has been rescheduled to Thursday of next week, April 2nd, at 6:00. So, and that will be in the Peninsula Room.
Okay. John?
Yeah, the Highway Department or the Highway Committee is tentatively scheduled April 20th for our road inspection. So if any supervisor here's got a road in their area that they feel we should look at or have a question on, they should contact Mr. Koloja or a member of the committee, and we'll take a look at it and get back to them with an answer.
Okay. Any other oral committee reports? Next is, any questions on the minutes of the committees? Going once, going twice? Next is review of vouchers, claims, and bills. Does anybody have any question? If not, to remind you, Door Kiwanee legislative days are April 15th and 16th. The WCA convention is September 20th to 22nd, and you've got to sign up for that with Jill. And I don't know how many people have signed up for Door County Economic Development Annual Meeting. You got a date on that?
April 24th.
Kathy or Chuck, you got a date on that?
April 24th.
29th.
29th?
For that luncheon?
Yes.
I think that's the 29th.
29th. Everybody that wants to go can sign up. Has everybody signed up, or don't you know?
I don't have anybody signed up.
It's actually on 29th.
Okay.
Just heard about it now. Okay. Wednesday.
There was a... We sent a letter out, didn't we?
April 24th.
No.
Didn't receive any.
The way it was going to work is that the county was going to pay for your meal ticket and not a meeting or mileage, and you're all could attend. Most of us did last year, if I remember correctly. Do you know who the speaker is?
Ray King.
Can't think of it right now either.
He's the head of the manufacturing and commerce. I can't think of his name.
Okay.
Bill Sugarworth, go back.
And just another reminder, you have to let Jill know by the next meeting whether you're going to go to the WCA conference in La Crosse by next meeting, so she can get you registered.
Mr. Chairman, you're talking about the Door County Economic Meeting last year at Stone Harbor?
Yes.
The governor was there.
Yeah, we're talking...
Coming up here.
Oh, this year, I don't know.
Who the speaker was going to be. Okay. Anybody got any questions?
I'd like to make a motion. We adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Well, one...
No further business to be transacted.
Before you accept that. Next county board meeting is April 21st. Remember that, Tuesday, April 21st, at 9:00, okay, Joel?
Perfect.
Okay. Go ahead, Ken.
Now I'll make a motion. We adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
John?